Today is July 27, 2020. The time is 9:31 a.m. and we're here for the purpose of a workshop on security, safety, security, and hurricane preparedness. And we are scheduled for two hours. So our presenters today will be Mr. Rick Parfitt, the Director of Safety and Security, Chief John Holloway from the Lee County Sheriff's Office, joined by Colonel Jim Rankin from the Sheriff's Office, Commander Mike Miller, also from the Sheriff's Office, along with Lieutenant John Kuko, Cape Coral Police Department. At this time, I will turn it over to Dr. Atkins for any further intros. And we're ready to enjoy the workshop. And good morning, Mrs. Jevonelli.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. We do have a lot of information to provide you today. And I just want to start out by saying that I greatly appreciate our partners taking the time to join us. I think they did this, they definitely did this last time when our, when these contracts came up, and I think they're really a good source of information. And of course, Mr. Parfitt and his team, you know, so they're going to, they're going to cover a lot of material today and hopefully be able to answer all of your questions. So at this time, I'd like to go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Parfitt, I believe, will open us up and we'll get right to it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Parfitt, and welcome.
Good morning. Also, we're welcome. Fort Myers Police Department Deputy Chief Randy Pepitone is also online with us as well.
Okay, thank you.
This morning is an update on safety and security. And the slides that will be up here in a second, we'll go over some of those matters. There are about five items that we have prepared to present. The, the first two are actually are combined, the school resource officers and the guardian program. And just an update on the SRO interlocal agreements currently, we have two agreements going to the board tonight, and we have two pending. And the pending ones are because we're still working out details with the agencies. The Lee County Sheriff's Office is ready to go, but in the event that there's a budgetary problems, Fort Myers may, may or may not be able to fulfill that. We're going to have to go back to our plans with the Lee County Sheriff's Office on, on those schools. So we're still working on that and have that, have that handled pretty quickly. The, the only real changes to our interlocal agreements with these agencies, we've, we've refined some language that comes about because of statute and best practices and mainly for staffing, making sure that we have a school resource officer on site at the school day. And the agencies have plans to cover those when there are absences from the officers at those schools. The, the really, the bigger part of it is that we're adding a second SRO. This past year, we had two SROs at the high schools, most of the high schools in the county, and most, those are some of our bigger high schools as well. But we had two SROs at the high schools in the county, and our plan is to add a second SRO to all the high schools. So that would be four in Cape Coral and two in the city of Fort Myers. And additionally, with the Gateway High School plan, the portables behind Lehigh, we're also adding one SRO there. We would gain a second SRO at Gateway, or excuse me, at Benita Springs, because there will be a capacity this year as well. Next slide. The, the law, there you go, I'm sorry. The, the law provides that we must provide and work with our law enforcement agencies to provide a state school officer or officers at our schools. And it can be one of these four things. And the school resource officer includes law enforcement officers from our, our current law enforcement agencies. That's the model that we've adopted, we adopted last year as, as a board and as a district. And it works well for, for a number of reasons. I'll just highlight a couple. The, the law requires that we have a threat assessment team in every school. Part of that threat assessment team requires that we have a law enforcement officer on that team. And having a law enforcement officer and SRO on site actually adds more favorably to that, that we have those folks there. Obviously, we have other, other areas that we work with law enforcement that they, they take kind of jurisdiction over, for example, Baker Acts and, and some other areas. So we decided last year that the school resource officer was the best plan for us. Another option is a school safety, as a school safety officer, school police. And we don't have those here. We're not a school police agency. The third one is a school guardian, being a school employee. And that would be that we would train a, a school employee to be a guardian. And they would have to meet all the same requirements that, that any guardian would have, the, the training, the psychological background. We would have to equip them and other items. The, the fourth one was added last year, and it's a school security guard. And this is basically a contract armed guard. And again, these folks have to be trained by, or trained as a guardian through the guardian program. So they still have to meet the 144 hours of training, along with the psychological and all the other background requirements. Next slide. The school, it can be, as I said, a school district or charter school employee can serve as a school guardian in addition to their other duties in the school. But basically, we, we would be arming a, a school official. There, there are pros and cons to that, obviously, and I know you've heard them all. The employee of the school district or charter school would be hired for the, the purpose of, the second would be hired for the purpose of being a guardian. This would be just, we would hire an employee and make them a guardian. So it could be a, one of our security specialists or somebody that could be hired if they meet those qualifications as well. But again, they must, they must complete the training and the continuing training in the background qualifications, requirements under statute, and certification by the sheriff. The sheriff's office has to certify that these folks meet those requirements as well. The next one, a school security guard, and they have to hold the security licensing through the state, the Class D, Class G license, and that would be the security guard, armed security guard. They again have to go through all the proper training. The, the part that, that is probably least appealing to having a, a guardian, and that would be in any case, but especially in a contract situation, a contract guardian, they have no authority to act in any law enforcement capacity. So they're, they're basically there to stop an armed aggressor, an armed threat. They don't have the ability to sit on our threat assessment team as a law enforcement officer. They don't have the ability to Baker Act. They, they, their, their sole purpose is to prevent an active assailant incident. So they're very limited in what they can do. The law provides that a school board must vote to implement a guardian program by a majority vote, and that the sheriff would establish a guardian program or provide access to a guardian program to the district or charter employees, either directly or through their other services that they've established. So again, to implement a guardian program, this board would have to vote by a majority to, to go with that program. Next one. The sheriff's office would, would assist the board in that, in that endeavor and at a minimum, just providing access to it. There are a number of sheriff's offices throughout the state that, that do not provide it, and there are some that provide it for other counties as well. Each of the charters, for example, were, were sent a letter last year indicating that if they, they wanted a guardian and their counties did not provide it, that they could go to a county that would, a county that would provide the training through the guardian program. With that training, and, and I'll let the folks here that are better able to answer that or explain that, but the, the sheriff who conducts guardian training, training issues a certificate to those meeting the requirements, but they have to maintain the documentation of, of weapons and inspections and training and all those things that are required for a guardian. Now, the, the training easily could be, could be handled by our local public service academy and, and the police academy would probably be the appropriate ones. But again, that would be dependent on the, the sheriff's office and what they decide in that regard. Lastly, on the guardian. The sheriff conducting the training is reimbursed for training. So the state would pay for the training, and they would pay for a one-time $500 stipend to each person who, who is certified as a guardian. The, the funding from the state does not include paying for them in any other fashion. And we also just have to be aware that the governor did veto over $41 million from that budget to train teachers, coaches, and school employees as guardians on their campus. So there, there was a, a cut in funding for that, and I'm not really sure where that, where that's going to land on the training aspect. Before I move into the next area, if, if I could, if the folks in the sheriff's office would want to add anything, or if you think that there are any questions that I haven't answered, let me know now. Okay.
Rick, just something that you might want to mention, I think that's always important, and that is when you look at, at the cost to the district for a, for a guardian versus the cost to the district for a school resource officer, and you know, that always comes up. And I, I know that, you know, people think there's a, a big bargain with the guardian. And I, I think that just depends, if you look at what the district cost is, you know, our cost is roughly $50,000 for a school resource officer. If we were equipping a guardian with a salary of something in the neighborhood of $35,000 plus benefits and, and training and all of that, you're almost talking about a comparable amount for, from a district perspective. Now, there may be additional funding, and again, I defer to others in terms of how that works, but that's the one thing that people don't, I think, need to understand is that right now, we have a cost share with our partners, which is why I'm so appreciative of, of the county and the cities and municipalities that, that partner with us, because, you know, they provide the other half of that training. So, or that, that funding, I mean. So, you know, overall cost of an SRO might be in the neighborhood of $100,000, but there's a, the, the cost of the district is half of that. Do you have to unmute?
Absolutely. We, we crunched some numbers last year, and we put those together, and we actually had a meeting with the sheriff's office earlier this year on, on that very thing as well. And when you, yes, when you factor in the costs of, of the whatever additional pay that we're paying, the training, the uniforms, the equipment, the, the liability insurance, those are factors that have to be considered when we add these, because right now, those are things that we don't pay for. And when we looked at, at the numbers, it, it, it basically was a wash, that, that what we were paying, and matter of fact, one of the companies that, that we met with, with the sheriff's office, did in fact admit that the cost of, of a, a guardian from them would be what we're paying right now for an, for an SRO.
And Rick, just to add the substantial difference in terms of what that person can do on the site, in terms of the, which Rick outlined already, the dramatic difference in what, what kind of role they can actually serve on the campus in a daily capacity.
Yes, we just basically have to think of them as, as an armed guard. That would be their role in, in the school. Okay, I have Chief Holloway here from the sheriff's office follow up and answer any questions that I haven't.
Mr. Parfitt, excuse me. I have Attorney Bruno with a question.
Well, I just wanted to clarify a little bit with regards to the statute. On Florida Statute 1,006.12 subsection 3 talks about the school guardian. And what it specifically says is that at the school districts or the charter schools' governing board's discretion, as applicable pursuant to Florida Statute 30.15, a school district or charter school can participate in the program. But then when you look at Florida Statute 30.15 subsection 1K, the discretion is left up to the sheriff. So it can be established if the sheriff so chooses. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Yes, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Bruno.
Good morning. My name is John Holloway. I'm chief of the Lee County Sheriff's Office. Sheriff Marcino is at a sheriff's conference, and he regrets that. I would like to relay that his, his desire is to always, the safety and the security of the children in Lee County is the utmost priority to him, and very much appreciate the opportunity to participate in the school resource program. But I'll tell you that one of the things that I wanted to add is to, to add to two things. One, the sheriff's position, if, if the board decides to pursue a guardian program, we will take whatever steps are necessary to facilitate that, through the Public Service Academy that we have a great relationship with. We will, we will train and certify those individuals. The second part is to make it clear that the sheriff believes that if you pursue a guardian program, it would be in addition to SROs. We wouldn't be very, very concerned if a school were to lose an SRO and substitute a guardian because of the limitations that have been indicated. But I think it's important to understand the payment that the sheriff's office receives does not cover a lot of the costs of the SRO program. It doesn't, we lose money on almost every SRO, but commitment to the, the safety of the schools and such, that we, we absorb that loss and we find a way to, to pay for those things. It doesn't cover the infrastructure necessary to maintain the SRO program. It doesn't cover the commanders, it doesn't cover lieutenants, it doesn't cover the drug, the narcotics and the bomb dogs. But again, the safety of our children is utmost priority, so the sheriff is, is subsidizing that. I say those words only to make it clear that we are really, really proud of the SRO program. I think you all have seen that it was just awarded the, the award for having the finest SRO program in the state. We're dedicated to that, and we will work with you in any way we can to keep the children safe, and we will facilitate a guardian program, if that is your desire, with the understanding that that's in addition to the traditional SRO in each school and two in every high school. I'm, I'm a lawyer, so I talk a lot. I hope, if you have any questions, just let me know. That's good. Thank you.
Okay. I have Todd Everly here. He supervises the, the Public Service Academy, and he'll provide an update on some of the training requirements and, and costs involved there as well.
Good morning, everybody. I mean, Rick asked me to cover a little bit of the, what kind of training is in the, the state requirement. And this, this FDLE broke this down as a basic recruit class. It's 144 hours. Part of that is, and is really, really heavy on firearms training, and a little bit more than what the basic recruit goes through at the basic level, not when they get out to pre-deployment to their agencies. So they will do the 80-hour basic recruit class. That is, that is live, hands-on shooting qualification, practical and, and part of that. There's precision pistol, there's discretionary shooting, there's active shooter. These are supplemental things that also have to happen. You must also pass these skills. Then you also have to take an eight-hour of the block of the criminal justice defensive tactics. It's a short version of what our law enforcement and corrections officers do. They do a 80-hour block. And then the state threw in about 12 hours of legal issues to make sure they understand what they're getting involved in, their rights to, while they're carrying a gun, their rights to understand about secondary targets. If, if, you know, a lot of this goes is that, God forbid, there was ever shooting by anybody in a school, is that you have to understand that there's going to be a lot of people moving parts, a lot of moving around, and if they had to discharge their firearm, there is some legal responsibility on them, no matter if they're a guardian or not, just like a law enforcement officer, if they weren't keeping up with their, their training or they did something that they probably should not have done. Also, part of this is, is there's a recognized diversity training program. We have that here. They have to spend 12 hours with that. And then there's some critical incidents that I recommended. This is on top of the 144. When I looked at this, I looked at it as, what would we like for someone to carry here and make, make the program a little bit better on top of the 144? And I had some ideas there that was on, on top of that. The question would be then on the basic recruit is if, if the board decided to go down there, you're giving them just two options, hands-on and then gun, a firearm. Understanding what their responsibilities are only is to stop an assailant. That's how this was written up, but there's no alternative for them in the middle. So they would have to understand their responsibilities if, if depending on who was giving the training, that they understand that if there's a high school and there's a fight in a high school, that they're still carrying a gun on them, and how easy that gun is to take off of somebody. So there's a lot more to this on that. The cost to this minus a psychological test, a background polygraph drug screen, all of that that is required would be around, roughly around $21, $2200 per applicant recruits, as we say, when coming, because it is a basic recruit class. That is, that is the cost roughly per person to come out and take it. Now, that does not include, and that would be up to the sheriff's office and the school district is, is that be mindful that our law enforcement officers that are out there, they do quarterly training. So there's going to be a lot of repetitive training that is done constantly. You're not going to give somebody a gun. They have to meet these minimum standards and say, there's no more training. You're going to have to somehow build in a cost factor for the quarterly training would be the recommendation. That's what majority of your progressive law enforcement officers in departments do. And to build in a factor of the ammunition, the cost, guns, holsters, and whatever else the agreement would be on, but you're going to have to maintain these standards constantly for liability reasons. You just don't want to do this one time and not make it like a concealed weapons class and then not have them come back again and qualify each, each year and so on, to make sure that they're, they're meeting those standards. And I stand ready for any questions off of the training portion.
What members, any questions? I have three hands. Mr. Everly, I have Betsy Vaughn.
Good morning.
Yeah. Oh, excuse me. Actually, I've had my hand up for a while. I'm not sure if we're just going to be going over particularly what Mr. Everly just said, or I had some general questions based on... based on everything that we've been hearing. So.
Please proceed. Thank you.
Okay, one, one of the questions I have, we're adding a second SRO at every high school. What I was wondering, is there any general guidance on versus of SRO? I know we have quite a variance of numbers of students from, I don't know what the smallest number is, but then Lehigh Senior has what like 2,500 or a whole lot more. Anyway, is the guidance on that more the number of students in a school or the number of square feet? Because I can see some of our schools, even though they may have small numbers of students, they're more spread out and and kind of connect it to that. If it's on students, we have quite a few, we have several middle schools that are huge in number of students. So I was wondering what the basis was of adding a second SRO at every school.
Okay, the 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 state originally talked about legislation requiring, for example, and based on on student population base, you had a thousand, for every thousand, you would have an SRO. So as as we approached 2,000 or over 2,000 in a lot of our school, high schools that we would add to, that that did not pass through legislation. There was talk through the Stoneman Douglas Commission as well, that that being a best practice. And the last information that I have on it is that the Office of Safe Schools is to propose a best practice for that. And and my recommendation is, and I think based on the advices that that I'm going to to use, is that as we approach 2,000 students or more, that we would add a a second SRO and especially in the middle and in high schools. We have 1K8 that we have two as well. But that that's you're correct. It would be based more on student.
And I had two other, two other questions. One of the things I would like to see with our SROs and I think.
Muted, but I can't hear you.
I'm not showing that I'm muted. I I hear her.
Yeah, I do too. I can hear her. Rick, are you unable to hear us right now?
Hold on a second. We are having some technical difficulties here. I see you're not muted, but I cannot hear you.
He can't hear anybody? Mr. Parfitt, can you hear me?
I'm just getting an indication from that room. Just stand by. They're going to try to fix the issue problem. They're working on it right now.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins.
With somebody looking at it right now.
Thank you.
Can you all hear me now?
I can, I can. Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
I can.
Okay, great, great. That was the. Mr. Parfitt, you have an echo, Mr. Parfitt.
Yes, I guess we have some feedback here.
Yes. So in a few days, we'll be back to in-person meetings, hopefully.
Okay, we're trying a different computer here. Can you hear me?
I can hear you, Mr. Parfitt.
Okay, I think we've eliminated the feedback. All right, I'm sorry, Ms. Vaughn, I didn't hear the.
Yeah, yeah, I'll I'll repeat. I didn't finish asking it anyway. What one of the things that has always been important to me with our SRO program and and I and I know because we have, you know, the sheriff's department, city kid quarrels, that we have different departments that are providing, what level of training do the SROs that come into the school have in terms of not just greeting students, but actually being able to, if time permits, go into a classroom maybe for five, 10 minutes to address the students or to conduct some kind of, well, we're probably not going to do assemblies anytime soon, but that that kind of thing to really foster some programs and and it's important at all levels, but I think it's really, really important in our elementary schools where many of our students may have seen dad go off to jail or friend of the family shot in the street, those kinds of things. And they've already developed maybe a negative attitude toward police.
Yes, and I I can't speak completely to it, but I know that the, for example, the SROs all have to go through a basic 40-hour training and part of that training does include that. I actually participate in a small segment of that training as well. So I know they do cover some of those things in their basic training and they also have what they call CIT or some related type of a training. It's a critical incident training and it's it's again another 40 hours. I think our program here is run through NAMI. And so it it helps the 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 deputies and officers dealing with students of of all types of backgrounds. And and I know they do cover the presentations and I know part of our agreement, part of our interlocal agreement with the the law enforcement agencies is that the the officers and deputies do provide that type of training and at that level at the schools, that they do interact. And I know that's a big part of the the SRO program is that they they train them in that, those interactive skills with kids.
Okay, and I know I've brought that up before and was told it's up to the principal, but I feel like like having. Sorry, I feel like this this particular year with all that has gone on with the demonstrations and the protests against police, that of all years, this is really, really super important in our in our schools. So I just wanted to bring that up again and hopefully going into our schools this year, even though we can't have, you know, assemblies, but maybe there's something that we can do so that the children, you know, there's some that come in with having seen the arrests and shootings and there's others that come in with their various points of view. And hopefully not, but I I see that if any year is going to be one where we have things even erupting among the students on various sides, that this would be the year to be ready for that. So I just wanted to say that. And hopefully everybody's ready for that and prepared.
I agree. I know the law enforcement agencies, that is, that has been a consideration of of their seeing what's been what's been transpiring throughout the country. And I think also in in conjunction with what we do on a school-based level, a district-based level with our mental health teams and things like that, it 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 does have more of a comprehensive approach when we talk about it.
That's that's great because maybe they can work in conjunction, literally in conjunction with the mental health. Because that's going to be a real issue this year with what has been happening spring and summer. So thank you.
Okay, I have Chief Holloway just to to add some additional info.
I I appreciate the opportunity to speak again. We got distracted last time. We have an incident taking place elsewhere. I just wanted to finalize finalize my statements to you. I wanted to let you know the sheriff is is very supportive of a guardian program with the concept that it supplements the SRO program. And if I, I just want to make sure that anything that enhances the safety of the children in Lee County, the sheriff is supportive of. And he's supportive of the guardian program, especially as a supplement to the SROs. And I just wanted to make sure that I had made that clear that we we believe in anything that will improve the safety and we believe the guardian program will improve safety, especially working cohesively with the SROs. And I apologize if I wasn't clear on that. I say we got temporarily distracted. And with that, if you don't have any questions, I'll walk away. Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I I do have three hands up. I have Mrs. Patrica, Ms. Gittens and Ms. Jordan. So is this a good time, Mr. Parfitt, for them to go ahead and proceed with their questions? Okay, Ms. Patrica.
Yes.
Thank you. So Mr. Parfitt or any of the officers in the room, are there any complications associated with the SRO and the guardian from a law enforcement perspective? You know, you hear people talking about if there's an active shooter, you don't know who the guardian is and law enforcement doesn't necessarily know who they are when they arrive on a scene, that kind of thing. Is is that a real concern or is that just something that?
Sorry, we're losing audio again. Okay, yes, sorry, ma'am.
That that's that's good. So are there concerns from alarm enforcement perspective, having an armed employee on school grounds that is not a police officer?
There are. That's that's always a concern, especially when responding officers, the SRO may be familiar with somebody in school that is authorized to carry a gun, but so the other responding officers and deputies would not. So that that's a big concern. I mean, it's a concern in law enforcement, the blue on blue or green on green interactions with, you know, shooting. So that would be a major concern that they know that they're not going to know who who necessarily is authorized to have a gun if they're not in a uniform or or some way identifying themselves.
Okay, and then who absorbs or assumes or has the responsibility for the cost of the training that Mr. Everly discussed, the 22, 2100 to 2200 plus quarterly training? Who's responsible for that cost? Us or the sheriff's department?
Well, it would be, it would be the sheriff's sheriff's office through the the state funding, the guardian program. But again, I don't where that's going to lie now with the with the large budget cut that came from that. This, the governor just signed the budget cut from that. So but that program, that's what it intended to do. It intended to reimburse the sheriff's offices for the actual training of the guardians.
So is, Dr. Atkins, do you have a response from a budget perspective as to whether that? I mean, it's my understanding that the 41 million was cut and that that money is no longer there for sheriff's department. So we're talking about either the sheriff assuming those costs from his existing budget or us assuming those costs from our existing budget. Is that is that a fair conclusion?
At this time, that's what I think would be a fair conclusion. I believe that, you know, when you look at the the guardian program, if we were to do a guardian program, I think it would be a situation where we were wanting to add a additional security personnel to a building, like let's say we wanted to add another person to a large high school and the sheriff's department really was not able to share funding for an SRO for that third individual. So if the district wanted to do that, we would take that $50,000 investment and we would we would invest in a guardian program. Again, I don't, I at this point, I don't see where, and I haven't been presented an option where a guardian would actually save our district a significant amount of money. Now, what I what I am still trying to get a good answer for, which is a little bit where it gets murky with the governor's veto here, is is there additional funding that can be tapped into that would not be available to the district if we were not availing ourselves to the guardian option? That's what I still haven't had a good response on.
Well, you know, just to to kind of add into that, what the doctor just said, you know, we we talked about the the training fee, but the psychological testing is is more expensive than the training fee. All those things were part of that $41 million that was vetoed. So, you know, there there are significant additional expenses in it. Mr. Parfitt, Mr. Parfitt also brought up about the equipment costs as well. Equipment pieces being reimbursed, that's a part of that budget. So there's there's a lot of additional costs that that Mr. Parfitt mentioned while he was presenting that that are part of this. You know, the the one piece that I think escaped out of the 41 million was the stipend, the $500 stipend. So they're just, there is a significant piece and that's why we have not brought a proposal forward to say, you know, that we recommend this, that, you know, because there are those financial uncertainties. Certainly, as long as this program is is out there, that will be something that continues to be evaluated. But right now, our stance has been to prioritize SROs. The SROs are the safest, best option and that by by maximizing that capacity based on recommendations that came through Marjorie Stoneman Douglas, as well as a grand jury about a ratio of SROs that is helpful to a certain level of student population with the full vested authority that law enforcement officers carry, that that is a vastly preferred option to ensure safety, as well as we didn't talk about the liability insurance changes when you start having additional folks in there. So there's there's a lot more to it. We do appreciate, however, the sheriff's office being receptive and and open to that piece because obviously that is part of their role to authorize those programs if so, compelled via the school district towards that option. So, you know, I we I don't want to reiterate a lot of things that have already been done, but just to kind of bring what Dr. Atkins was saying back to what Mr. Parfitt was saying as well.
Good, I I appreciate that. I'm I'm super concerned about the cost as well. We're heading into a bit, a budget discussion at 5 o'clock this afternoon. What I'm hearing you say is that the guardian program is not included in the budget that we're that we're discussing this afternoon. Yes?
That is correct.
Okay, and my final question is, I I did receive an email from the principal or somebody from Athenian Charter who indicated that there was some frustration on his behalf that we didn't have a guardian program because he believed it would be far cheaper. But from what I understand you saying, it's really a wash in terms of the, it's about $50,000 for a guardian, it's about $50,000 for an SRO. So creating the guardian program is not going to alleviate expenses for our charters. program is not going to alleviate expenses for our charters. How are we working with our charters? Are, are we reaching out to them? Are we making sure that they're aware of their options and the costs associated therewith? Those are my questions and comments, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Patrica.
I just, I'm just waiting on the answer to that last question.
I understand that.
So, let me just hit the first part of it and I'll let Rick follow up. Yeah, I mean, that's, that's the big, that's the big challenge. I mean, I know our, our charter schools are looking for a, a cheaper option and, and it sounds like, well, you know, guardian is, is a lot cheaper than an SRO. Well, the thing is with the partnership that we have with our, with our other entities, it's, it's really not. The cost of the district remains to be at that fifty thousand dollar mark. And then there's also some unknowns that are out there. And again, I think the best option at this time is we as a district, we're choosing to put additional safety staff, safety officers into a larger facility, for example, and the sheriff's department didn't have the resources to be able to do that or to be able to do a cost match. That's probably the best option for where this, you know, where a guardian would come in. And that would be absolutely supplementing the SRO program, was exactly what the sheriff's department was talking about. One of the things that, from an economic perspective and not a safety perspective, it, it is a struggle for some, for us to be able to equip all of our school, particularly our charter schools, the very, very small ones. And because, you know, it's, it's a, a large expenditure for a small number of students, if you think about cost of the guardian program per student. But of course, you, the requirement is important to meet and that requirement is that you have a school safety officer or SRO in that building. So we still have to do that even if we have a very, very small charter school. I do know that, that, you know, our office works very, very closely with our charter schools to try to make sure that, that we're getting, you know, making sure that that requirement is met. I mean, it is literally calling them individually and working with them individually. And I don't know, Mr. Parfitt, if you want to mention that, how that happens, that's also done in conjunction with our, our charter school office.
Yes. And the, to be honest, the only, the only cost-saving benefit for a charter that, that could be is under those four options of safe school officers, if they choose to train one of their employees, whether that be an administrator or a teacher, to be a guardian, that would be up to that charter to determine what they would pay that person additionally, you know, to, to be carrying a gun. They would have to pay for, of course, the, the weapon, the ongoing training, the, the in-service training. They would be, they would be responsible for. And, and probably the biggest would be the, the liability insurance, whatever that cost would come out to. So when you factor in those things, they're, they're probably going to be pretty close to what we pay for an SRO when factoring those costs. But that would be the only potential, I would say, for those small charters to, to maybe save money is to train one of their own administrators.
And the option is available to them. The, the difficulty is we just haven't had training in Lee County that they could avail themselves to. And, and one of the things that got, some of them got caught in last year, that there was a group that might have wanted to go that route, but they were unable to get somebody trained in time for the start of school.
But, but they do have the option to go to another county that has that guardian program and get their certification through there. So if, if they were able to find some cost savings, it is an option for them to do that.
Yes.
Okay. And Madam Chair, one more thing. I failed to thank our law enforcement professionals and experts for being here today. It always gives me a lot of comfort to hear from our law enforcement leaders and know that the full resources of the sheriff's department, the Fort Myers Police Department, the Sanibel Police Department, Cape Coral Police Department are just a button away on our school campuses. That, that always gives me a lot of comfort when we're talking about safety and security for our kids. I promise I won't talk anymore now, Madam Chair. Thank you.
No. Thank you, and I appreciate those comments. You echoed mine. Thank you. Okay. At this time, we'll entertain Mrs. Gittens.
Okay. Thank you and good morning and thank you all for being here. To make sure, this, this is a lot to take in, not just for me, but for those that are watching in the community as well. What I'd like to do for a second is to make some statements and then whoever has the answer to that, just tell me whether I'm true or false in making these statements. For example, I did hear that the sheriff is okay with doing two SROs and one guardian in a school. I did hear that, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And now we have basically one SRO based on its size of the school. Is that correct?
Yes. Generally, they're the high schools that have, have two, other than one K eight.
Okay. And the high schools in that one K, is that based on just this year's size of it?
Generally, the size and, and also I think the volume of, of, I don't want to say necessarily incidents, but the encounters that they may have.
Oh, okay. Okay. And we pay now, we pay part and the sheriff's office actually pays the part that is more than ours. Is that correct?
That's my understanding as well. Yes.
Okay. And in going forward, part of that funding that allowed that last scenario was cut when the governor cut some of the funding, correct?
The, the funding was cut from the guardian program.
Well, just from the guardian, not the SRO program?
Right.
Okay. All right. Just wanted to make sure.
Not the safe school funding.
Right. Okay. So what the possibility, we had talked previously about doing a hybrid of having some guardians and some SROs. Is the sheriff's office pretty much sold on having two SROs at a school?
They are, they, they prefer to have two SROs in our high schools and in the one K eight that we have has two thousand students.
And would, would they negotiate to have in those high schools, one, one SRO and one guardian?
Um, I, I don't know. And I don't know if these folks would be able to address that or not.
Well, what I would say though, if they did that, then, you know, you're talking about, you know, potentially the district paying for, you know, a full guardian and then them paying for the SRO. If they were going to split the cost, I don't know if they'd be willing to split the cost of the guardian, but I mean, I would believe that, you know, an SRO in a, another SRO in a building of two thousand would be the safest thing to do.
Okay. So basically then we're saying funding cuts and who's going to pay what? That the guardian, if we were to go with even one along with the SROs, is going to, the cost would be taken care of by the district. Is that correct, Dr. Atkins?
It's, it's my understanding that, that we would be paying, that we would be providing our fifty thousand dollar cost share twice to, you know, for two people in a building. And if, if it was an SRO, that would be, they would provide the other half of that cost for both of those officers. If it was a guardian, that would be a district borne cost.
So, but, okay, so I'm trying to make sure.
I haven't heard anything other than that. So.
So if we are paying for each SRO, that K, we're talking about we pay half of them.
Correct.
We had one, what, if we had two SROs, which I heard them talk about, then that brings us to the fifty K for, you know, combined for the two.
You would, you would be, it would be fifty K for each SRO.
Right. But we're only paying half if it's an SRO and we're paying.
An SRO costs a hundred over a hundred thousand dollars. So our share is fifty thousand. So it'd be fifty thousand per SRO for the district.
And then fifty for, okay. Well, I was confused with that.
And the guardian, if, if the district were to bear the cost, full cost of the guardian, that would be approximately fifty thousand dollars. And I say approximately, I mean, some of those, we haven't paid for a guardian. So, you know, we're just made some assumptions based on the model we built last year.
Okay. Cause I did hear somebody saying that it was fifty for the guardian and fifty for the SRO, but.
Well, yes, ma'am. If, if, if you're talking about the district's cost to an SRO, that we, we pay fifty thousand dollars for an SRO.
Okay.
And we share that cost with the dis, with the sheriff's department who puts in an additional at least fifty thousand dollars for that SRO for a cost over a hundred. If the district by itself paid for a guardian without any input from another agency, then that cost of just the guardian would be approximately fifty thousand dollars. There'd be no other hundred, you know, fifty thousand that would be added to that.
Okay. All right.
And I've never, I've never, I know that the sheriff's is willing to provide the training and support, but I've never heard a willingness to pay for half of a guardian.
Okay. So the guardian would be on us. And Kenny, you mentioned something about, or someone did, about cost per student for these services. And I just, it, it kind of brought to mind the size of schools. And it may be another conversation, but the larger schools is going to make this cost go because we do have to have more safety and security. But that's just something I've.
Now, ma'am, I would say a larger school actually, from an economic perspective, is actually to cost you less per student. The cost, if you look at the cost of a small school for the services, those services are actually more cost, you know, you, you're putting in, like, let's say Fort Myers Beach, for example. If you look at what is the cost to educate a kid at Fort Myers Beach for all the things that are provided, it is actually cost, costlier per student to operate a small school than it is a large school. It's just a matter of scale. As you get larger, then it, it, you know, you just have the economics of, of increased scale. So the cost of that SRO per student is less. Yes, you have to provide, you know, an additional SRO. But if you're thinking about, let's say you took Lee High Senior High School and you divided that into, you know, buildings that were less than a thousand, and you still had to provide an SRO for each one of those, now you're looking at three versus two, you know, or providing an SRO for a, a school that's about two hundred versus providing an, an SRO for a school that's also at a thousand. You know, so the cost per student at the two hundred student-station school is much more per kid for that SRO than it would be at a larger school.
Okay. Thank you. I'm just, you know. And one last question for actually Mr. Everly. I believe he was the one that mentioned about the training, the diversity training. And my question on that is, is the training related to education and schools and cultural competency? Or is it more the generic, you know, law enforcement focus of diversity?
It's, it's actually, yes, ma'am, I do. It is actually both. The way the Florida Department of Law Enforcement, when they put together a structured recruit class, we would call that a basic class for the guardian, that was really built around K-12 type of incidences and so on. And it's updated. What it is is that the, the training academy would find a nationally recognized, and that's how the state of Florida does, it has to be a nationally recognized training block for that and for that training. And we would use NAMI. That's who we use now and have it tailored towards that. But I, I think dealing with this every day in, in the profession is that there are some differences and, but there's not really as many as, as, as from dealing with an adult learner and then a, a child. Other than there is some box in there on how to deal with, you know, pre-K and so on, because there is some differences there. But that's all covered in that national NAMI type of training. And that is part of this that the state of Florida has put together.
And, and I understand what you're saying about dealing with an adult and child. I was coming more from the angle of dealing with education as far as diversity, with us being a majority minority district and also, you know, looking at our discipline numbers and keeping that in mind as well with the minority population. So the cultural competency is something that's really, and has been proven to be very, very important with the discipline and, and, you know, the SROs and whoever's disciplining the children to understand the cultural competence that they need to deal with those students.
Yes, they really. Yeah, yes. I, I also get that. And remember, anything we, if the district ever pursued this, we could add on top of the hundred and forty-four to make comfort levels for the district. If that was what it was, obviously, we could add certain portions to the minimum requirement of a hundred and forty-four hours.
And is, is the same thing though being done with the SROs as far as cultural competency?
That, that's correct. And they get it at the basic recruits. They get it at that advanced class and they get it inside their in-service training as, as, as the world involves around incidences and so on. Like, they, they get that quarterly training constantly from their own agencies.
Okay. I'm sure that they do. I just wanted to know on the record. So I will put that as well. Thank you so much. That's my question.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Gittens. And now we have Mrs., Ms. Jordan.
Good morning. Thank you. Good morning, everyone. I had a question for Chief Holloway. He had come back and made a statement that he had not finished what he was speaking on and that the sheriff was, I guess, in favor of this? Did I misunderstand what you said?
No, ma'am. You did not misunderstand me. The, the sheriff is in favor of anything that increases the, the safety and security of the children in our schools. The guardian program is a way to improve the safety and security in our schools. We have no problem with it. We like the idea of the guardian program. We're happy to, to facilitate it and make it happen. We need to make it clear that we see it as a supplement to the SRO program and not a replacement. So when we have a school that is staffed with a, a number of SROs that we think are, are reasonable, we, we believe it would be helpful to have additional guardians. We just didn't, we just think that it's a program that is a great supplement and the sheriff is more than happy to make it happen. Working as, with the SROs and the guardians together, we think that would be a way to increase the safety in our schools. We also believe that it's very, very important that we work very, very closely with guardians. For instance, one of the questions earlier was identifying the guardian during a, some type of attack. We would want to work with that guardian and make sure that that guardian knew what we were going to do when we showed up, if we weren't already there. And we'd want to have some kind of identification process. You know, you know, some, some sheriffs are using special, almost like school crossing paraphernalia that is a certain color that everyone will be able to recognize that individual immediately. We make this work if you decide to go that direction and it's a way that we can improve safety at a, just a, a way to improve safety. We don't have any comments as to cost. We don't know, we're positioned to talk about your costs. So we're, we're just hopeful that when, anytime somebody, I'll put it this way, anytime somebody comes forward with a program that makes the school safer, we're, for instance, in our real-time intel center, we voted hundreds of thousands of dollars to software so that we can instantly view every classroom in the schools. We've spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on other technologies so that we can respond to schools quicker, more rapidly, with more effectiveness. So the school guardian program, we see as another level of protection. And the more level of protection there are for our children, the better we like it.
Okay. And well, and the reason I'm asking, and I appreciate what you just said, because me personally, I, I have, I think that the, that the SROs are, have always been an important role. They play an important role in the schools, you know, involving getting to know the students and having them, you know, trust in them. And for, I, I would. And for, I I would assume that you would have said, I prefer my our own people, our own, you know, sheriff's department uh or police enforcement in those roles where they can be recognizable. And then that way, and I read all the stuff from the different, um, there's so much information on SROs. If you look it up, what is best practices? And it seems by far, in reading um all these um different um documents and stories, the best, the best solution for us is definitely um having a SRO versus a person who they would not know is there for them. And I mean, it it says how they build, you know, positive relationships, how it's better for children when um if the need, and I'm reading it right off of this um, how it's better for them when a situation arises that they are used to seeing a person in uniform that they're gonna know that that's a safe space, and they're not gonna be, uh, they're gonna be less fearful. So I I was just kind of confused when, you know, it was, uh, we think that that's a good ideal versus I I agree with the SROs, and I really appreciate everything that they do, and I see them in action. So I know we're having the conversation because, you know, we were asked to do that, but I just, I I
Well, I guess if it helps, we see it as two distinct, different uh packages of services. Our SRO program is second to none in the nation, incredibly successful, and we're very proud of it. Uh, and it carries with it all of those attributes that you just referred to. It has a lot of uh consequential benefits that serve everyone in the community very well. I mean, we're very happy with it. Uh, what we were saying about the guardian program is that's a, to us, that's a completely, not completely, that is a different, limited focus. We don't expect uh, we don't expect children to to approach school guardians or ask questions or what we see a school guardian as is an armed intervention uh should there be an attack. And I think that's what the school guardian program is designed for, whether you, whether you's a current school employee and uh make that current school employee a guardian. Uh, that would not replace an SRO. Uh, what it, uh, in blunt terms, what it does is it puts another trained firearm between the children and a bad guy. And so we always appreciate additional assistance to protect our children. And I I probably caused that confusion because the two roles are related, but they're very distinct. And the role of a guardian is a very limited role, although an incredibly important role. And it would be another level of protection for the children. And uh, we will accept any level of protection for our children we can get.
Thank you. I appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Benelli?
Hi, thank you. Okay, so I actually have uh several questions. Um, and I think to really clarify, it's just an added enhancement to the SRO. It's not in lieu of, I think that's what we need to be clear, because it's, I believe that any layer of extra protection for our students would be um very important. Um, in the investigation regarding Parkland, they they felt that the the uh, the guardian had been there, that would have been the first responder. They would have been the first ones to have probably taken out the um threat. And um, we wouldn't have had lost seventeen lives that day. So that is the, that is the point to the guardian program, why it was implemented. And because they saw that that need was very important to be the first responder. Um, out of, there's forty-two uh counties that are already um using the guardian program. What what are they paying in liability? I'm sure y'all have the answer to that, please. No answer?
I don't, I don't know. When I asked the question, um, I I got a a variety of of answers for it. And again, it depends on the number that you have um and the insurance carriers that the districts uh currently have. I think when we looked at it a year ago, uh, we were talking in the neighborhood of of depending on how many we had, we were talking neighborhood of fifty thousand dollars or more on added liability costs, and I'm not an expert on that, so I don't know that for sure. Um, and some of the, there are a number of districts that have them, and some use them as a, as what you describe as like a force multiplier, uh, that they're adding additional uh layer of security. But in in essence, it could be one way or the other. We could, I mean, the the law would allow us to operate with all guardians if that's what we chose. Um, but I agree that it could act as a force multiplier uh in that, and some of the counties that they are, that 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 are using them, especially in the rural counties, one of the reasons they are is they're, they're, some of them have a hard time finding law enforcement officers, uh, SROs in in those counties. There was a, especially when this law passed two years ago, requiring a safe school officer in every school, a lot of law enforcement agencies were having a hard time uh keeping up with the the that growth in in hiring a number of qualified people, and some of those counties still are. And and the guardian program has allowed them to uh comply with the law in that in that regard. That being said, just my my own uh professional opinion in this is that if we're gonna look at it as uh adding additional layers of security, which I have no, no problem, but I think that we we would be better served to uh dedicate those funds to more of the prevention aspect, because a guardian is only a responder, as the chief mentioned. Uh, this individual is only gonna respond to an active threat. Um, if we use that, if we use whatever funds that we're talking about in the prevention aspect, and I'm talking about whether that be uh additional mental health support, because when we look at violence prevention in a school setting, it it's, that's where it's coming from. Um, I think we get too focused or fixated on the response piece, not necessarily the prevention piece.
Okay, so I agree with you. Um, I'm not opposed to, I think, any, I think, any monies we can put towards mental health, and we have those funds, let's do it. I am only cl- clearly talking about the guardian program and the the fund that was su- supported by the governor. And I believe those funds are still there. The guardian program is still funded by that. If the, if if there's no funds for that, for that, and it's not supported by the state, I would be opposed to um spending any additional funds on on that, so I wanna be real clear about that. So I, my question is, would there be any objections to um seeking the information and and seeing what we would actually be provided? It would be contingent upon the funding from the state? And is anyone opposed to that? That's really, I I don't wanna tap in on into any of our resources that we're getting that would, that would take away from any of our, the monies that we could have to put towards mental health. And that is, this is um another layer of protection for students strictly guardian program and guardian funds. If there's not, then I would be opposed to um putting any of our resources towards that at this point in time. And I absolutely, um, my husband's in law enforcement, so I would never uh take the SRO program out of our uh our plan and what we do. That is uh first and utmost important. So this would only be a small added layer to it, and obviously, not every school maybe would even have one. So I think that uh it's strictly up to what we, funding we can get at the state. And that would be my recommendation, is that we, it'd be contingent upon funding from the state. And so that, I wanna be really clear on that. Um, you know, I I just don't understand the objections if we can, if we can get that um, those funds, and tap in on those funds, and it would totally be a hybrid model to enhance our SRO program. So I wanna be real clear on that, because um I think any layer of protection that we can have for our students and keeping our students safe um is the, my, one of my number one priorities, period. So that's where I'm coming from. So um Dr. Atkins, I'm gonna ask you this question. If you, if there, would you still object to the uh guardian program if it would be fully funded and be contingent upon the funding from the state regarding that?
No, I wouldn't have an objection to that. I mean, you know, I think we've always stated that is if we were to able to avail ourselves to additional funding that would be specific to the guardian program that could supplement what we're currently doing with our SROs. And we now, we know where the sheriff stands on this issue, that it it potentially could be a win-win and would allow us to put an additional layer of security. Um, you know, otherwise, what we're working on right now is is believing that we have a very similar budget. So it's where do you use existing resources? Um, however, um, you know, as I said before, we had Yeah, and I understand. I think we're, I think we're on, we're saying the same thing. If we're able to avail ourselves to additional funding specific to guardian, I think everybody would be supportive of of that uh option as a supplement to the SRO program.
Great, thank you. That's what I was trying to get. I think we're getting our, the water, the water a little muddied with liability and the costs. And and I'm, I wanna take that off the table completely. And if it's fully funded by the guardian, and if it's not, then, okay, then we don't do it. But I being told that there's, there's two appropriations, and there is money for it. And I want to know that for a fact. So that's what I will be pursuing. Thank you.
Understood.
Thank you, Mrs. Giovinelli. Um, I just wanna check in with Ms. Morgan. I thought that you had your hand up before, and I don't know if you still have some comments, ma'am.
No, no, I I had a question. The question's been asked and answered. I'm fine. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So um, before we move on, because I know we do have ten more um slides uh to this uh total presentation, I just have a couple of comments. So I think what I heard in this whole discussion was that um, that compared with the full scope of authority of the SROs, their fully vested law enforcement authority, that there are limits on what guardians can do. One of those things would be that they would not be building relationships with with the um students and other staff. So eh, in essence, uh the scope of services of the SRO cannot be compared by the guardian. The other thing is um that if we look at the data, I mean, i- is there a potential that they're gonna make schools safer? I haven't seen that. And if we look at historically at the number of active shooters in schools, which have primarily been, I think to more than seventy percent, have been students, current students, uh and the increased awareness of the need for prevention programs and mental health services, and thank you, Mr. Parfitt, for mentioning that, that I think if we had funding, it it would be better invested and and the outcome would be um stronger if we continue to um present our restorative practices, our prevention programs, our mental health. And I know that's all over the news today about our mental health plan that we're gonna hear about later. So post-Parkland, I think we've had a heightened awareness. And I think it's really important for us to remember um, an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. And then so if we are building those relationships and the kids feel vested and like they belong, they're less likely to um bring a weapon to school. And I, we've had a recent event with that, and I think that if we uh with our increase in mental health professionals and the redirection of our student services staff to working more with that, that we would be um more likely to identify kids at risk and give them the interventions and services that they need. So, you know, at this point, I think I would continue to support the increase in prevention programs and mental health programs and ours, our fully vested school resource officers who have that full entire training ongoing and who share the cost with us. So I don't see that we would have any um cost benefit to the district by by doing that. So I just wanted to add that to my list. And um and and and, you know, and and the guardian is the school personnel. And so, I, you know, I just think that it muddies the waters at this point, especially in this community, having the situation that we have with a very strong partnership with all of our local law enforcement agencies. So I thank you for that. And I see, Ms. Giovinelli, your hand is up again, so we'll have one more go around on this, and then we'll move on with the program.
Thank you. I'll be quick, actually. So, yes, I'll be quick. Um, but, so a guardian could be a teacher or a staff member, and they would still have that relationship. Actually, I think they would have that relationship at a, even a deeper um level, because they would have been in the system and been around the school and so forth. So I think that's the opportunity that we're missing. Um, they're just uh able to carry and have had the training. So I, I think that, that I agree with what you're saying, but, cuz everything's about relationships. Uh, I myself believe in in relationships. So I think that, and 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 again, I think we need to be clear, the guardian is funded, and we're not gonna take money from our budget and and put it to the guardian. If we did, I would not be in um, and and uh would not be uh agreement with it at all and not support it all. So I think that's, that's all I'm I'm saying. Um, now we have two more hands. So
Yes, and now we have two more hands. Thank you very much, Ms. Vaughn. Yeah, I I just wanted to say two things about the guardian. I could possibly see um adding a guardian at, let's say, at a very large middle school or elementary school where they're not at two thousand students. And um, you know, we want to supplement. But one problem that hasn't been mentioned about a guardian is, as our employee, um, you know, that person may resign, and then we're, then we're stuck. It's, somebody else would have to be trained. It's not like we have a bunch of trained guardians out there. And and secondly, I had to raise my hand at what Ms. Giovinelli said. Um, the idea of a staff member, um, whether it a teacher or an administrator, um, carrying a gun and being a guardian would be something I would never support. And I know in prior discussions, um, I I know that the teachers' union, I'm talking about the state teachers' union, has really taken a stand against that idea for a myriad of reasons, which I won't get into. But I I I just wanted to point out that I wouldn't get opposed if it's funded. And and I think um, that's something, actually, for today, we should have been informed on, um, that somebody should have looked in into that to answer that question. I'm a little surprised that it's not answerable today. But um, yeah, the idea, the idea of a staff member carrying a gun, um, that just
I will, I will answer that budget as best as I can today. But I will ask, um, I'm gonna loop back around Carol Green just to verify. Our understanding is the only additional funding out there specific to guardians, um, it would be that five hundred dollar supplement. There isn't other money out there for, specific to guardians, other than that five hundred dollar supplement. If there is another pot of money, we are not aware of it as as a district. We do know there's safe schools dollars, but those are dollars that we use for our SROs. Those are dollars that could also be used for guardians, but they're not specific to guardians. They're, they're school safety. They, they, we can use them for a number of things, and the majority of our safe school dollars go to the SRO program.
Yeah, and I I'm very much in favor of SRO. Um, and I especially agree with everything that Ms. Fisher just said about mental health and and Mr. Parfitt about the prevention, because when we, you know, I mean, we could have an incident at any time with an active shooter, but ninety-nine percent plus of the time of um an SRO or um any, any of the safety people in the schools um will be dealt with Baker acting and weapons in school and 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 some other those kinds of things. So those are my comments. Thank you very much, uh, Ms. Vaughn. Mrs. Patrica?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm I'm not sure on where this question surrounding the money is coming from, but the money was vetoed by the governor. It does not exist. It's 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 not there. Um, that's first thing. Second thing is, um, Ms. Fisher, if I may ask you a question of on the prevention side, um, let's think about next year's legislative platform and uh discussions surrounding, does it make sense for us to advocate for money for a guardian program to be added back into the budget? Or does it make sense to have more money put into mental health? Or does it make sense to have more money put into mental health to prevent the need for a Guardian in the first place? So I just want to plant that seed now for future discussions on legislative platforms. Thank you.
Yes, thank you for that. And I have a later on report this evening regarding my last contact with Carol Green and our legislative priorities. So thank you for bringing that up. Okay, so now moving right on. Do I turn this back to Dr. Atkins, Mr. Parfitt, or Dr. Seppich?
Mr. Parfitt.
Go on with the. Yeah, go on back with Mr. Parfitt. Sorry.
Thank, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Parfitt. Please proceed.
Certainly. If we could have the next slides. The, the next, maybe six slides are all related to Alyssa's law. And we'll cover them quickly because this, this, this law doesn't take effect until next school year. I hope Dwayne's still on board here because he's our resident expert. But the, the statute's very, very limited, but it says that we, all schools must implement a panic alarm system that had the ability to coordinate with first responders and with an answering point at 911. So basically, our, our panic alarms have to go to 911. And we're looking at with technology services, in particular, Dwayne, we're looking at several different platforms and the state has, also has a, an RFP out for looking at, at programs as well. But I, I'm pretty sure that their RFP is going to look at a, a mobile app. So if we go to the next slide. And as I mentioned, this is, is in effect during the next school year, but the, the RFP would, would be a state recommended product. We don't know whether that's, they're going to pay for any of that. If, if it's adopted, that part is yet to be seen. But I anticipate that, that this product will be a mobile app. And between technology services and safety and security, we've, we've discussed a number of different issues related to the pros and cons of, of that versus a hardwired system. And a hardwired system is obviously much more costly, but just real simply, a, a mobile app would require employees to download an app on their personal phone. And that app would have to be voluntarily downloaded. It would have to be updated. And again, in a, in a crisis situation, an emergency situation, you want to take steps away from folks as to what they, what they need to do in an emergency. So a mobile app would require them to have their phone on them, have the app downloaded, have it updated, be able to find it on their phone and, and to use it. The hardwired system would, would include either a pendant or a smart card that has the capability of alerting through basically a push button, kind of like, you know, if a fallen can't get up, kind of a, of a system that a, a teacher or a staff member could push a button and identify. Again, that's much more costly. Take a lot more infrastructure from the IT services, and I'll let Dwayne speak to that if he's still on board. But this way, it's, it's a system that we could, we could require folks to have. We cannot require them to necessarily download an app on their personal devices or necessarily carry their own device, but we could do this with a, a smart card or a pendant type of a system that would allow it. Think we're going to look at all the proposals, but that, that's kind of the, the breakdown of that. Next slide. Currently, the, the, our, our system has some redundancy in it, but it, you know, telephones in classrooms, intercom systems in classrooms. But they, we need to make them have the ability to directly call. Now, obviously, a phone could, but we have to have a mobile, mobile type of a platform, a panic system. So it's not so much as just having a panic button in a, in a classroom that somebody could hit. It's got to be something that, that happens. Currently, a number of our schools have radios for certain administrators. They may use them for PE classes where they're taking classes outside, that they're carrying a, a school radio with them. That could obviously be increased as well. And obviously, people have the option of using their own personal cell phones. The next slide shows what I mentioned earlier, the, the options that are available, the app versus a pendant system. And Dwayne, if you're still on board, do you have anything that you want to add?
Sure, I'm, yeah, I'm, can everybody hear me okay? Okay. So looking at the process that the state envisioned, because along with this legislation, they, they did come up with a process for them to issue their own RFP. And, you know, there are a couple of challenges with that. One is it is likely that we would not find out what product line they are selecting and recommending for at least a few months. This system has to be in place for the opening of the 21, 22 school year. So waiting for the state to finish their RFP, if they, if we chose to go a different direction than they did, could present a challenge as far as implementation timeline. So what we're doing at this point is running essentially a parallel process with the state. The state will issue their RFP and we are also going to issue an ITN. And our ITN is going to have specifications that essentially are looking for systems that go beyond the, the mobile app scenario that, that Rick described. We met with a group of principals and, and some internal staff, including those that work with the bargaining units around the potential issues with a, a mobile app only solution. And everyone felt that we, we needed to look for something that was a little bit more reliable and also that, you know, rely upon employees being required to use their own personal devices. So the, the solutions that are out there, as you can imagine, there are a, a ton of them. But the solutions that are out there that would meet the requirements of something beyond just an app only situation provide, you know, a wider range of functionality than just a shooting situation, right? So we want to hope that the, because statistically, a shooting situation is your least likely emergency. And we hope we never get there, but we also want the system to be useful in the event of medical emergencies and things like that, where it could help alert the office and EMS staff and, and potentially provide indoor location of, of the emergency. So we're, we're looking at all those feature sets and looking at mechanisms to make this as simple as humanly possible. Because again, in any emergency situation, you need to be able to operate the system with reptilian brain. So you don't have a, a lot of time. You can't jump through a lot of hoops. You can imagine if you get your phone out and then you had not logged into the app and you're fumbling around trying to get the app. So there, there are a lot of challenges around this. We want to make it as simple as humanly possible for the, for the users of the system.
Thank you, Mr. Alton. I have a hand. Mrs. Gittens.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Alton, if you can, I didn't say this publicly because you don't want the kids to know, but I've always heard that at the schools and working, especially in high school for over 10 years, that there's sometimes a scrambler so kids can't use their phones. And I don't know if that's true or false. However, having worked in the schools and they are so hurricane and securities, using your phones in the classroom, even, I mean, for an app or for whatever purpose is sometimes impossible. So if, you know, when you're looking at a kind of device, the cell phones is very unreliable to get connected.
Sure, you'd have to depend upon them remembering to connect to Wi-Fi instead of cellular in the building, which again is another step, and, and a lot of people don't do that. And as far as jammers, just to clarify, there, there are no jammers. They're, they're tech, they're actually, it's actually illegal for us to jam cellular service, because that would interfere with 911 capabilities and that. So the FCC doesn't permit that. So there, the, the school, the, the students, there are all kinds of rumors about that kind of stuff, but I can assure you, we don't use jammers.
That's exactly right. That's what I wanted to know.
And they would have to be enormous machines to cover a school, so you would see them. But the, again, yeah, exactly. So the, the, the requirement to hop onto Wi-Fi is just one more of those steps that we're, you know, a little bit nervous that everybody will have done, right? So especially students, students tend to not hop on Wi-Fi because they want to text message and do other things, we know. But staff, the same thing. They, they tend to use other services throughout the day that, that don't work so well on Wi-Fi. So, yeah. We, the types of systems that they have other pendants and things like that, they don't depend upon public infrastructure. They essentially have their own closed way of communicating with receivers in the building. And so it's a lot easier to implement that without interference from, from other wireless devices.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate it. And the kids were glad to hear that. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Gittens, Mr. Alton. Okay. I think we're moving right along now to hurricane preparedness.
Yes. Okay. If not enough's happened in 2020, we always have to deal with hurricanes and the preparedness. Some of the benefits that we've, we've, the employee portal is we can make certain types of documents more accessible, more readily available to our, our staff. We, we've updated our hurricane preparedness manual and with the county's emergency management folks. We have prepared and preparing shelters, the hurricane shelters that we have at 14 of our schools. And along those lines with, of course, with everything else with COVID, everything going virtual, the, the county has, has provided us with some virtual training. In the past, we've depended upon a lot of in-person training on, on hurricane preparedness and managers training. So the, the county has provided us with virtual training on that. We have uploaded those into the employee portal and will be accessible to the folks that, that are working in, in our shelter, shelter basics or the shelter managers. Along with that are a number of the documents that are required. Of course, our hurricane preparedness guide, but some of the other forms and, and documents that are required for operating the shelters. Some of the upgrades that continue there as well with, with tech services, we've added bidirectional antennas to the shelter schools. So our emergency services have radio reception inside. A number of our older schools, if you remember, have difficulty with radio transmissions, the deeper you get into the schools. Window replacements have occurred at some and, and as well as generator repairs. So we are prepared, working with maintenance departments here, prepared should a hurricane happen and we're ready for that. Any questions on that?
Let's see. Okay, so I have, Ms. Patrica.
Is, is there any talk with the county about reducing the number of people in shelters and having to open more in the event we had a big storm hit?
We, we have discussed that with them. They're looking at other options as well. They're looking at, at placing people into hotels and things, which I think would be difficult, and they know it would be difficult as well. They're looking at, again, depending on the severity of the storm and the, the ability of the individuals to take care of themselves, that people actually shelter in place, shelter at home. But some of the things that we have talked about from the school standpoint is that as best possible, we're, we're going to limit the number of, of people per space. But as you know well, ma'am, you worked at one of the shelters in Irma. That doesn't always happen depending on, on the severity of the storm that's rolling in. So they, they, we do have plans for that. They're, part of the, the training that's on, that provided by the EMA is the COVID-19 update to talk a little bit about that. So talking about designating certain areas of the shelter, for example, if people do come up with symptoms or have symptoms and we, and they can't get to a shelter or another place, we segregate areas of, of the schools for individuals that have symptoms and things like that, too.
And what about PPE for shelter residents and shelter workers?
Yes, and they're, they're, they're equipping that. One of the things that the county did, they don't have, I don't believe they have one for every school yet, but they have trailers that they, they've assembled. And these trailers have a whole lot of equipment that they are going to deliver to the schools prior to, to a hurricane. And they have a lot of the, the PPE. One of the things that, that we just worked on this week with them is that each of those schools is getting a pallet of hand sanitizer, as a matter of fact, probably later this week. And they'll have 240 gallons or so of hand sanitizer available for shelter use at the shelter schools. But they will have those in place. We, when you look at the COVID-19 update, they discuss possibilities of, of, for example, taking the temperature of everyone coming in. And, and the fallacy there is that individuals standing outside waiting to get in, into a shelter are going to have a higher temperature when it comes down to, you know.
My final question for you is, and then I have a comment. How many, do you know off the top of your head how many schools we have that are prepared to serve as shelters?
Beyond the 14, the, the county has several that they've identified in, in a worst case scenario that they would but none of them are technically qualified right yet.
All right. And Rick, as I hear you, I'm sorry, Mr. Parfitt, as I hear you talk, you know, I was going to talk tonight, my comments about the outstanding job that our staff is doing, but it's like every time we talk about a new subject, it's like peeling back the onion and realizing just how deeply involved every department of this staff is and getting our schools and our community ready for reopening during the time of COVID. So I really appreciate the thoughtful approach you've taken to this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Patrica. Ms. Jordan.
Thank you, Mr. Parfitt. I had watched a couple of weeks ago, actually, the emergency management, the gentleman was there speaking to, could have been with the FSBA, but don't, can't swear on that one, but they were speaking about exactly what Ms. Patrica just asked you and what you were stating, how we need to make sure that, that they are prepared for the COVID and they are buying pallets and pallets of PPE equipment to make sure that we have adequate supplies throughout the state of Florida. But they also were saying, as you stated, the hotels will be used as well for some of those, especially the, the COVID patients, I thought they were saying. But that we, as a district or as one of the shelters, cannot refuse anyone. So whoever walks up to the door, regardless of their, how they're feeling, if they're sick or not, everyone will be accepted inside the building. And then they were also speaking about using different rooms, classrooms to isolate those people who may feel, you know, ill. So I, I know that's, you know, on top of everything else that, you know, we have going on, that is a lot to even, you know, start considering, you know, because we're in the, the midst of hurricane season. And so I, I just really want to thank you as well because we have a lot to, a lot more coming our way. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. And Mr. Parfitt, I just have one question for you. On our employee portal where we have all of the recorded trainings and the guide, et cetera, do you have some idea about how many of our staff members have taken part in that training and have an awareness about what to do in case of a hurricane and in case their school becomes a shelter?
We do. We're, we're working currently with professional development to build a number of these programs and, and some others into, I was going to cover that in the next, build them into the ELM system, the, the learning management system here, so we have a better idea of tracking them. You know, the old days with the in-person, they were assigned and whatnot. So now we're looking at, we're having these built into the ELM system that we can track the numbers that, that attend.
Thank you very much for that. Okay, I see no other, let me check. I see no other hands or questions, so please proceed.
Okay, next slide. The next couple I'll cover quickly. We're, we're actually very excited about these. We, we tried to roll this out last year and this year with additional funding, grant funding, we were able to improve upon what we want to offer to the schools. We, we tried to roll this out last year and uh, this year with additional funding, uh, grant funding, we were able to uh, improve upon what we wanna offer to the schools. So we've adopted a, a programs through a foundation called I Love You Guys. And some of you, I think, were even part of the uh, training that we did a year ago. And the, the, this foundation offers their, their training platforms available to any school uh, at, at no cost. They can download, it's open source material. But of our research, we found that they, they truly are the best. There are a number of schools throughout the country and actually even throughout the world that are adopting their programs. And two of them that we've done recently, um, we, they're called the SRP, the Standard Response Protocol, and the SRM, the Standard Reunification Method. Uh, we've since went back and, and re-recorded those trainings, again, making them available through the portal and also uh, trying to, getting them linked to the ELM system, so we'll be able to track those as well. And the, this, the, the SRP program will adopt standardized language in an emergency. And again, taking steps out of uh, things that people have to do in an emergency will be very helpful. And again, standardizing the language. So we're looking at, for example, the SRP has a poster, the next slide, if you will, shows the poster that every classroom will get. And um, it's, it standardizes our language in, in any type of a crisis situation or emergency situation. Good, forward the next slide.
Next slide, please.
The, and we want this to become common language with everyone, not just um, teachers and staff, but also students as well. That this is the standardized language that we wanna use in an emergency. And there are, uh, the training that accompanies this SRP and SRM are uh, very good. They're, they're um, very useful in a, in a school setting. They were designed for school settings. So this is like the, the poster, for example, that every classroom will get. What we're, what we're also doing along these same lines is that we're building what we call a rock kit. It's a reunification kit and we're doing that right now currently in, in the building here. And each school will get two uh, their, their chest cases, lockable cases. And we're building those right now and they'll, they will be self-contained. Everything that a school would need in a re- a, a reunification is included in these two, these two boxes. And uh, it, it includes everything, not just the, the, the uh, manuals, the binders, the name tags, the reunification cards, uh, caution tape, a, a bow horn, um, pens, pencils, all types of things. Uh, and it, it's an interesting uh, approach. And I think one of the things that, that, one of the things that we're doing is we're putting it together for the schools, so we're not uh, making the schools have to come up with buying this and, and assembling these kits. They're all gonna be standardized and we're doing that now. Uh, the hope is that we have them ready by the time school starts with the delay. It's helped us a little bit. We're still waiting for some uh, items to come in, but you'll see more on that as well. Um, next one. Uh, next slide. Along with the, the SRP SRM training, uh, we conducted this training, as I mentioned. We're, we're uh, excuse me, I'm sorry, next slide. But also incorporating in, as part of our training matrix with, uh, working with professional development is building these types of trainings also into uh, the ELM system. So when we want uh, administrators uh, or others to take this, these levels of training, we'll be able to track them. Uh, we'll be able to find out uh, who's taking them. And we're, we actually recommend certain levels of training for certain folks, uh, school-based administrators, district administrators in the types of, of training. And these are, these are some of them that, that uh, we were gonna, we are gonna see. Lastly, the last slide. Is uh, and, and some of you probably saw the news on this with the, with the sheriff's office recently. We, um, we completed a, a, a program of grid mapping our schools with a, a company called CRG. And this company came down and they walked every school. And we, we've, they've provided grid maps, so these grid maps. And if you haven't seen, if you didn't see the news on it, there's a uh, a, a video, a corporate video they have there that, that, that shows a good uh, example of the use of these, these maps. And the nice thing about these maps, every school has them, every school has been, has been given access to their school maps. And the maps are gridded, their, their locations identified in, on each of the maps as to uh, maybe um, utility areas, shut offs, those kinds of things. But the, the, the best part of it is that it gives any type of emergency responder the uh, the ability to describe where to go in a situation. It identifies certain rooms, uh, ma- uh, learning that the uh, learning resource centers, the uh, gymnasiums, cafeterias, those kinda areas. Um, and it identifies them. So when, when officers are responding, medics are responding, uh, they'll, they'll be able to give them uh, directions instantaneously on where they're at. These maps have also been provided to all the 911 systems. And when, when they were, uh, the comments that we got back from 911 were, were amazing because they uh, they, they all indicated they'd been waiting for this kind of technology here for years. Um, and if, if you were, were, uh, saw it with the sheriff's office in their real-time intelligence center, uh, that has the availability, I, Fort Myers Police Department Real-Time Crime Center has this availability and 911 systems all over the county have it as well. So a dispatcher can, will pull up these maps, can pull up these maps uh, and direct emergency services immediately to the areas that they're needed. Um, SROs can, can download them, they can have access to these on, on their devices. Schools can have them on their computers and they can also print them. And they can use them for other things other than emergencies as well, um, events that are occurring at schools, um, not just necessarily emergencies.
Awesome, thank you. And um, Mr. Parfitt, we have a hand here from Ms. Vaughn. Ms. Vaughn?
Yes, uh, I, I'd like to know what kind of modifications have been made for the various drills um, that are done in school? We have the evacuation drills, which um, crowd students, even though we're probably, will have fewer students um, initially. Um, and also um, we have the tornado drills where classrooms with windows, the kids have to go out in the hall, those kinds of things. So what kind of modifications have we made?
Good question, and that's something that we're working, we're still working on. Um, last week when I spoke to the folks at the Office of Safe School, they were waiting for some guidance from the um, State Fire Department's office as to some recommended guidance. We already have a draft of, of some guidance that, that we're, we're prepared to deliver. And, and part of it could be things as simply as staggering uh, drills, staggering evacuations. Uh, some of there are active threat types of drills. Uh, we can, we can easily convert to simulations, demonstrations, those type of things that we don't have to run. We don't have to run 19 evacuations this year, for example. We don't have to have 19 times that kids are leaving the building or uh, those types of situations. We are working on that.
Okay, good, good. So, so in other words, the um, fire department, fire marshal is not requiring the monthly?
They, they haven't given us, the State Fire Marshal has not given us a, a real directive, but they, and, and I don't wanna use the term eased, the, the regulations, but their, the interpretation of the regulations could be that uh, don't have to, everybody doesn't have to evacuate at the same time. Uh, you know, right now, the, the plan is that we evacuate a building, everybody leaves at the same time. For, for drill purposes, we can stagger those by floor, by grade, uh, things like that.
Yeah, but it, and it's pretty much timed also.
Yes, it was always a.
So, yeah, that'll be a modification also because um, should it be the real thing, um, it's, you know.
And that, that goes along with what our recommendation, guidance would be. It also will have uh, some classroom, um, some information for classroom teachers. You know, whether it be short videos or some discussion points, things that they can, they can, uh, with a, with a class.
Well, as, as long as there's some kind of a plan in, in effect, because I know, you know, even the bomb threats, all of those things, it always happens. So, okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, uh, looks like, Mr. Parfitt, you got through your uh, presentation in time. And uh, if there are no other questions from board members, I'll thank you for the presentation and the information along with um, Dr. Savage, Dwayne Alton, and our law enforcement partners. We appreciate, and uh, also Mr. Everly from our own Public Service Academy. So, do you have any closing comments, sir?
No, no, I appreciate the time and, and, and the uh, feedback.
Thank you. This was very important discussion, so thank you very much. Dr. Atkins, do you have anything else?
Not on that topic, ma'am.
Okay, great. So now we're at good of the order. So board members, um, we'll start with Ms. J. Benelli. Anything for good of the order?
Um, I actually sent um, an email last night regarding the NAACP resolution. Um, actually, I'm curious, uh, I, I was told, uh, when I met with them, that no one has responded. So the district has, this is for Dr. Atkins, has the district responded to them? What, what's the status on that?
Hey, I asked um, Mr. Williams a while ago to get uh, Mr. Hudak to look into that specific situation at, at that school. So he, I know uh, he is in the process of doing that right now and then he will respond.
Okay, because I'm, I'm concerned over that and I wanna make sure that we address those things that they're discussed, they're, you know, they mentioned, so. Um, and um, so then my question is back to the board. I'd just like to get a consensus um, on the Guardian program. If it, if this, if we could put that, you know, maybe to a motion that if, if contingent upon the state funding, would anybody be interested in that?
Board members, um, thumbs up if you're interested in supporting the Guardian program contingent on state funding.
Yes, contingent upon that.
Right, okay.
I'm the only one.
Okay.
So I, so I just wanna be clear, I'm the only one, no, I'm sorry, Ms. Ms. Gittens is, oh, she's got her thumb up. So I'm the only, so.
I can't, Ms. Gittens, your name, I can't see you because you, how about if you raise your hand on the participants um, list? Because that'll be, okay, Ms. Gittens has her hand up, Ms. J. Benelli has her hand up, any other board members? Okay, so that is to people interested in pursuing the Guardian program.
Madam Chair, if I may, Madam Chair, if I may, um, you know, I don't think it's fair to ask us to vote on a, on a hypothetical. Um, there is absolutely no evidence whatsoever that there's any funding available. Um, should the state provide us with funding? I'm happy to have this question come before the board again, but given the current circumstances, as I understand.
Funding is sufficient.
Madam Chair, may I complete my comments, please?
Please, yes.
Um, given uh, what I understand to be the budget, there, there is no funding from the state for the Guardian program. So again, I don't, I don't think it's fair to ask me to vote on a hypothetical. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And then we have a comment from Mrs. Morgan.
Well, I'm not finished. Okay.
Oh, I, I, I have to agree that I can't vote on something when, when there's, when there isn't some, a recommendation of substance. There's no cost associated with this, um, or we haven't been provided with the cost associated with this. So I, I'm not, I'm not gonna offer an opinion at, at this point. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, Mrs. J. Benelli, please continue.
Okay, so yeah, I, then, I don't understand why we're gonna blame the district for not having the information because that's what, this was the conversation that I brought up a couple of months ago, not even. So I don't, I, I don't see how we can blame the district for not having the information regarding the cost of, so, you know, the costs. And, you know, them provided that information. But, I mean, today, we're, it was the, it was quite clear that the sheriff supported that, that layer of security for our children and safety. So I just wanna be clear that we're gonna go against the sheriff's recommendation and the governor's recommendation because uh, if it's not funded, then we don't do it. But I'm told it is gonna be funded and it is funded. So I wanna make sure that that is the case. So it has nothing to do with the budget, so, um, but it's, we only have two people that is on this board that wants to support that. That's what I needed to know today. So that's, that's why I just wanna be real clear on that.
Thank you. And if you could bring back that information, that there's any evidence of funding, which even in today's press.
I don't know.
Was indicated that it was vetoed by the governor. So I, I appreciate that and, and I would always be open to more, more uh, information regarding funding. However, I think um, I was clear that I would rather put the funding to prevention. But I have a hand here from Ms. Jordan, who wants to.
Don't, thank you.
I, I'm sorry, I just wanna finish. I don't think it's up to me to, to, to provide the funding. I think that's where the district needed to come in to provide that information. So I don't, you know, so then I don't think it's up to me to, because I'm telling you that there's two appropriations and it is funded. So, but if, if this board wants to be clear and doesn't want to pursue that, that's just where I need to, I'm just making that clear, that that's where this board is at. Thank you. I'll stop.
Yes, thank you for that. And I, I believe that uh, Dr. Atkins, um.
And I, I gave uh, what I, what I believe our understanding of the funding is.
Right.
Or however, I also indicated that we would be reaching out to Carol Green and making.
Yes.
And so I will be happy to bring that information back to the board. That was always my intention.
Thank you very much, Dr. Atkins. Ms. Jordan, thank you for your patience.
No, no, no worries. Thank you. Uh, I, I just wanted to make sure because from uh, what I understood Chief Holloway to say is that he would go with what we decide. It's not that they're telling us to do this. Uh, and again, we do have to uh, be concerned about the uh, the budgets and the funds. And when I looked up, when I have researched this, it's stated that those funds do not exist. I looked on multiple sites, I could not find it anywhere. Uh, so I'm not sure where the appropriations are at, but I could not locate them at all. And if we did have the money, I would rather go to uh, what you had spoke about earlier. And those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, um, Ms. J. Benelli, anything else for good of the order? Okay, Ms. Patrika, anything?
No, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Jordan, anything for good of the order?
No, thank you. I have none.
Okay, um, Ms. Gittens, anything for good of the order?
Not at this point, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Vaughn?
I just wanted to make the um, the board aware that tomorrow afternoon, I'm gonna be meeting with Adam Malloy and Irma Lancaster. Um, I brought up the idea last week of um, a drive for face masks. And um, we're going to move ahead with that. So I'm gonna be helping out with that, hopefully, um, I'd like to be hands-on with that. And um, three of us are gonna be getting together. So um, it's gonna be for new reusable face masks. And we're getting all the information together. So after tomorrow, I'll be able to get information out to you about um, when it starts, which will be very soon. And that's it.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, can I jump in there for a second? As uh, Ms. Vaughn and um, Ms. Gittens spoke, I was reminded that the uh, Lieutenant Governor will be joining us for our Friday FSBA call to discuss the census. And I know that that's been a, a, a topic of particular interest for a couple of members of the board. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Thanks.
Thank you very much. And actually, I was gonna mention that too. Okay, so now, Ms. Ms. Morgan?
I have none. Thank you.
Okay, and the only thing I was gonna say for good of the order was to please remember to put out your word to people. We are still um, a little bit uh, low on our census count in Lee County and it really makes a big difference to us and healthcare. Um, so I think that we really need to do as much as we can, as we are visible in the community, to advocate for people to complete their census forms. And that will be all I would have. Ms. Bruno, anything for good of the order?
I have none, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Atkins.
Just a, a couple, several items I need to quickly go through. They won't take a lot of time. Uh, the first di- Uh, the first item is that the, uh, district is, we're finalizing our, the reopening plan and, uh, board members, uh, we're going to submit that to, uh, Ms. Dupree Bruno today to get to you. Uh, we, remember, that's one where the superintendent can, can submit that directly to the state. And so I'm going to do that, but I'm going to send it to you all before I do that. So you, you should receive that today. But wanted you to make, be aware of that. We did have a, um, and, and really just, just go back to that real quick. It's, it's really our reopening plan, which you've already seen and been a part of, but put into the state's, uh, document. And it's because they provide a template that we submit to them. And just basically making sure that we have in place in our reopening plan, there's five assurances, which we do. So you'll, you'll be receiving that. If you have any questions, please, um, don't hesitate. We did have a, uh, a foundation meeting, executive committee meeting today. And, uh, just a couple of things. The, uh, eighteen challenge is, uh, at this point has been canceled. Uh, so we're, we're not going to be doing the eighteen challenge. And then the, uh, the kids' tag art project is something that they are going to postpone for now or put on hold. So I just wanted to make you aware of that. Um, and, and we did thank them, uh, for their, their wonderful participation yesterday and support and sponsorship of the new teacher orientation, which was a wonderful event. And I do appreciate board members also being there as well. I think that was something that was just phenomenal. So thank you. Selection surveys. So right now, just to give you an update, we have, um, forty-seven thousand, seven-hundred-and-sixty-three of our parents and guardians have completed those surveys. The numbers, the percentages are holding pretty much the same. Uh, with, uh, overall, we've got, uh, forty-one percent so far that have chosen the face-to-face, um, option. The Lee Home Connect is about thirty-nine percent, nineteen percent Lee Virtual, and homeschool would be one percent. So, um, you know, if you look through the different, um, levels, fairly consistent. There's a little mild variance, but pretty much consistent, always in that forty percent that are choosing the face-to-face. And then, you know, it's, um, you know, usually in the thirties or forties with the, uh, Lee Home Connect. So those are the, the two most popular options. So I wanted you to make, be aware of that. Our chief of staff, uh, Ms. Stillwell, is working with, uh, uh, Latonya Thomas and, and determining a need for board support, additional support. Uh, so she is working on that. We may also involve human resources that, so know that that's a work in progress. I know that there are board members that want to meet in the boardroom this evening. And we're trying to accommodate that, all, but understand that we do have some technology issues that we're having to deal with. So, um, until we get everybody in that boardroom, it's going to be most conducive to continue to provide, you know, really this Zoom format. Otherwise, we only had two people that wanted to stay out and they could come on by phone. But once you get above two, then you start to, you, you need to, to conduct the meeting, uh, virtually like we've been doing. Uh, do want to make you aware, we are working with our local medical experts, uh, relative to the temperature check. That continues to be one of the more challenging parts of our reopening plan. So I'll keep you, uh, in the loop on that. Just the, the bottom line on that is, is similar to what you heard, uh, folks talk earlier when you're talking, when, uh, Rick, um, was talking about the staffing of the hurricane shelters, just the, you know, the concerns with spiking temperatures, et cetera, and the ability to logistically be able to do that. But again, we're working with our medical professionals and we'll have a rec, a final recommendation regarding how we're going to conduct, uh, and, or if we're going to conduct temperature checks coming forward. I know that there were some questions, uh, and a potential poll regarding Cypress Lake High School Re Roof Project. So, uh, I'm going to provide you with, um, information that Scott had provided. Recall that Scott, uh, in one of his updates had, that had been discussed, uh, in front of the board. And remember the re-roofing project, they got into that project and discovered there was an old roof underneath there and it was going to cost additional dollars to, uh, to take off that, that old layer, uh, that, that additional roof layer. And so, and also some lightweight concrete that was a part of that. And that was the, the reason for the additional cost. And we had some discussion at that meeting about that. But I will go ahead and, and provide this information from, uh, Mr. Rickenbacker to you. And if we have, you know, additional questions, um, or if there still needs to be a poll, we can address the rest of that this evening. That's all that I have for my comments, unless there are any other questions.
Thank you. And I do have a question from Ms. Gittens.
Yes, thank you. Um, the superintendent reminded me of a question that I had about, um, we, we have several kind of unfinished issues. And one is, uh, replacing Susan. And I know it came months before, I'm not sure where we're at with that. And the other is the, uh, office situation for attorney, Ms. Dupree Bruno. Can you piece up on those things?
Yes, so, um, again, with the office manager situation, we were wanting to, to see, you know, final outcome on the budget. And with, uh, the situation with, uh, Ms. Reader and Ms. Thomas, I think we, that's kind of taken a backseat. So now we're working on Ms. Thomas, or, or, excuse me, uh, Ms., providing you support, uh, while Ms. Reader is recovering. So, um, that's the top priority. Then we'll go back to that office manager. Right now, we're not recommending moving forward with that option. But I know Ms. Stillwell's working on a final resolution there. And again, um, Doc, uh, Dr. Savage and his team is providing us three options that I'm going to provide the board relative to the board attorney office area. Uh, and it'll provide you cost as well. So I know that, um, Mr. Pescatrice is working with operations and team to do that.
Do we have a deadline for that at all? I mean, we've been talking about it a little bit. So is there a deadline time to get that going before we said July?
I hope to get it in the near future. I don't have a deadline specific, no.
Okay, and with, considering all that's going on in the, um, reopening of schools and everything else, I, I know there was discussion about having an office manager. But is there a consideration of, at this point, just leaving it at, uh, two, um, secretaries or support staff at this point?
Yes, at this point, that's what we're, that's what we're planning to do.
Okay, thank you.
And, and if I may, at this point, um, you know, I know that Ms. Johnson left a list of, um, duties that she and, um, Mrs. Reader perform. And I, and I don't know that those have been expanded on to, like, you know, okay, so Ms. Reader does the advisory, uh, teams. And so I think we need to have whoever comes in there to help understand what that entails and what that involves, because that in itself is a massive undertaking. And so I am hoping that, uh, until Ms. Reader, uh, recovers and, and possibly returns, that we have some other help in there, someone who would have the skill set and the interest to be able to help out, to keep the ball rolling, just my, my own observation after many years in the board office. So just wanted to let that be, um, talked about. Okay, so anybody else, anything else for Dr. Atkins? All right, then, um, it's eleven forty-four, we're only about fourteen minutes over. So, um, at this time, seeing no other business to come before this board, this meeting is adjourned and we will see you this evening at five o'clock for the budget hearing. Thank you and have a great afternoon. Um, this, Mrs. J. Benelli, did you say something?
On the computer, right? On the, we're going to do it on the computer. We're, we're going to Zoom.
We're going to Zoom. I think, we're zooming, we're zooming. Yes, we're zooming, okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Have a good afternoon and stay well.
Thank you. Yes, yes, bye-bye.